Everybody is here. Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome everybody to our study session. Today's date is February the 6th. We are starting a little bit early today because we have a couple of items on our agenda that's going to take a few minutes to get through. So, we appreciate everyone being with us. We've got the full council here. First item on our agenda for today's meeting is to review the items on the agenda for tonight's formal council meeting upstairs. So, council, if you could please take a look at that document. Tell me if you have any questions. Skipping to item three, there are various liquor license applications. Agenda item four are various purchase contracts. These are the same items we went over last Thursday. Agenda item five are taking action on resolutions. Six is receiving public comment on ordinances. I hope I'm not rushing you through this too quickly. And agenda item seven is approving some subdivision plats. Everyone okay with those items remaining on the consent agenda? Or any questions from staff regarding those items? Okay, hearing none. The next item on our agenda for this meeting is item 2A, hear a presentation and discuss an overview of the city's enterprise fund, including the various utility rate structures. So, Candace, welcome back. I thought our meeting last Thursday was very productive. I think that was good for us and the community to hear more about the budget process. So, I look forward to continuing this educational television program.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor and council, today our topic is enterprise fund and in particular, the utility areas and rate structures that go along with those. So, again, this is our enterprise fund. So, it's one of the many funds that we have here within the city that we talked about last week. And the enterprise fund as a whole, as we kind of talk about as the enterprise fund, but within the enterprise fund, they actually contain many individual enterprises within that area, some utility and some nonutility enterprises. Today, we're only going to focus on the five major utility programs within that fund. And we're going to try to keep it to a high level to make sure that we can get through all the content in time for the other item on the agenda before your council meeting tonight. So, enterprise revenues. How enterprises are different. Enterprises are a little different in the fact that they provide services to customers for a fee or a rate for that particular service. Rather than providing a good in general, they provide a particular service to a particular customer. Their operation usually relies on infrastructure or large capital investments in order to provide that service. So, it's not just a service on and of itself. There's usually some large investment that we need to do in order to provide that service. The revenues are related in these areas are dependent on the consumption or the demand of those particular services. So, when we look at forecasting, a little bit different than when we forecast general fund revenues. Those, we're just looking at the revenues and trying to forecast what's going to come in. As we look at the enterprise fund, we're actually forecasting the consumption or the demand for the service. That's where our forecast starts. We go from there and then we look at what would be needed on the resource side in order to deliver that demand for service. And then we kind of go, the last part is to look at the rates that we would need to charge in order to cover those resources in order to provide that particular service to those customers. It's a little bit different in how we do the forecast. As we started, the first one we want to talk about is our solid waste management. So, for solid waste management, they actually, the infrastructure that we have is what we call a mobile infrastructure. It's a fleet of collection vehicles. So, that would be our large capital investment that we have in that particular program. And then there are operation of those vehicles, the drivers and so forth, and also the landfill charges that would be with that consumption. So, based on the consumption, our landfill charges would be the variable cost that would go up or down based on those. When we look at the forecast factors we look at for solid waste, solid waste rates are flat charges based on the service being provided. And we have some, on the next slide, you'll see some examples of the rates we have today. But one of the big factors for the solid waste management area is really the density of accounts. And that makes a big difference on their costs, on their efficiency of providing that service. So, the more accounts, obviously, the more revenue that we have coming in. But the density of those accounts and the distance to the landfill are some variable costs that are factored into the actual net costs or net revenues to that particular service. So, the next slide just really shows you our three main service areas, which is our black barrel, that's our refuse, our blue barrel, which is recycling, and then our green barrel, which is an optional service for our residents to collect their green or their yard waste as well. And obviously, the blue and the green would both divert trash going into the actual landfills. To move on to our electric area. Electric area has a fixed infrastructure for their distribution of electricity. And you can see the variable cost here is usually the electric commodity. However, as we show on the next slide, when we look at the rate structure, the commodity of electricity is actually passed on, the cost of that commodity is passed on to the customer. So, it's actually a pass-through rate that we have. And then in addition to that, then we also have a fixed service charge and then a seasonal consumption rate. So, when I say a seasonal consumption rate, that means there's a difference between the winter rate and the summer rate when we're looking at the consumption of electricity. One of the things we do with electric is we also have Salt River Project, who also operates within the city of Mesa. And we do a comparison with our average resident consumption would be if they lived in a Salt River Project area. And you can see on the next slide, it's kind of an example of a residential rate and also what that same rate would have been compared to the SRP rates. And it does show that our average consumer would have a lower bill than if they were in the SRP district. We have some slides here just to kind of show you, give you an idea of the number of accounts we're talking about when we're talking about these various programs. So, in our electric consumption, our residential versus our commercial. And then also the capacity or the usage or consumption. And you can see on the next slide, we kind of show a map of the area for electric. And it's really just in our downtown area. So, this is one of our smallest of our major utility areas would be the electric service area. As we move on to natural gas. Natural gas also has a pass-through factor for the commodity. So, the actual cost of the natural gas commodity is passed through to the customer. And it also has, this is a fixed distribution infrastructure as well, just like the electric. And so, when we're looking at the rates, you're looking at the same type of rates. You're looking at the flat service charge. And then again, also a seasonal consumption rate. So, depending whether it's winter or summer, has a different rate. And it says, as with electric, when we're talking about natural gas, we also have Southwest Gas that operates within the city of Mesa. And so, when we look at our rates and we try to do a comparison, we take a look at our average consumption, our average residential customer and compare that to if they were in a Southwest area district, where would the comparison be on the bill? And you can see here in this one that they would have a lower bill within our area versus Southwest Gas. To give you some comparisons about what we're talking about for our different customers. So, we have about 58,000 customers in our residential side and about 2,400 customers on the commercial side. Now, on this one, you'd be kind of broken out. You can see the consumption on the residential versus the consumption on the commercial. And then we also broke out the usage versus the service charge because there is quite a few more residential customers. We wanted to make sure that we were breaking out that service charge so you can really see where the revenues are coming from, whether they're on the service charge side or on the consumption side. For our natural gas area, we actually have two different service areas. And we refer to them as the Mesa area, which is in the Mesa proper, city of Mesa. And then we also have one what we call the Magma Natural Gas Service Area, which is quite a bit south of us. And you can kind of see that on the map, just how far south that is and a very large area down there. So, that is all outside of the city of Mesa. As we move into our water area. Our water has both a fixed commodity processing infrastructure, meaning we actually have to process the commodity. It's not just a pass-through like the electric or gas. And so, we don't have a pass-through cost to the commodity because the commodity comes in as raw water and then we process it to drinking water. We also have the fixed distribution infrastructure. So, they really have two different infrastructures that we are looking at and investing in in order to provide this particular service. And then the variable cost would be those costs usually associated more so with the processing side. So, that would be the commodity itself plus the chemicals and electricity needed in order to process that water. When we look at the water rate structure, the water rate structure is a little bit different than as we're looking at electric and gas. So, it's really two components. There's a flat service charge and then there's the consumption charge. On the commercial side, the consumption charge is just, is one charge for their consumption, regardless of how much they consume or the demand on it. But when we look at the residential side, we actually have tiers or levels of consumption. And we'll talk about those here and talk about what the differences are on those. So, if you look at our next chart, you can really see that this is residential demand versus the capacity of our infrastructure. So, when we talk about infrastructure, that is a fixed cost to us. We have to build the infrastructure to meet the peak demand. When it comes to residential water service, the peak demand is in the summer months. So, if you look at this chart here, that very top one, kind of that purple, is the top peak demand that we have for water in the summer. In order to meet that peak demand, our infrastructure must be sized for that. And so, on those year, on those months that we don't have that peak demand, and that's going to see all of that red on that graph, that red is capacity that we have within our infrastructure, but there's no consumption for that capacity in those months. But we still have the fixed cost. So, what we do is you look at the kind of four different levels, the green, the blue, the yellow, and the purple. And those are what we would consider our four average behavior patterns or consumption patterns during the year. And so, the goals in the water rate is to actually structure our rates for those behavior patterns and align those with those tiers. And when we talk about the levels, everybody pays the same amount per thousand gallons up to a certain point. So, everybody pays the first one in green. So, you're only paying an additional amount on that above. So, if you're looking at the blue, it'd only be the capacity within that blue area itself would have a different rate. And then the yellow area would have a different rate and so forth as we move up. When we looked at this, we looked at this about two years ago and noticed that the consumption behavior for water has changed dramatically from the time that we originally set our tiers. We had three tiers or levels of consumption for water. And over the years, through conservation and smaller households and just education, the consumption per account has gone down dramatically. And so, the behavior had changed. And so, two years ago, we looked at how do we go and realign those tiers back to those behavior patterns that we saw in the previous graph. We looked at it and wanted to do a phase-in approach. So, the council at that time approved a five-year phase-in to get us to where we thought we should be on our tiers, on our levels. And so, fiscal year 1617 was actually the second year of a five-year phase-in to move those levels. What that allows is allows the consumer to actually look at their behavior to see if there's something that they can change, some conservation that they can do. And if they can't, it allows them time to know what those increased costs are coming and they can prepare for that in their own personal budgets. This is where we are right now. Again, this is the second year of the five-year plan. So, these are our current rates for our residential rate tiers, just to kind of give you an example. As we look at our major water customer classes, we just want to give you kind of a highlight of what those classes were, where our customers are and what types of areas that they are in. And then the consumptions of those various classes. As we go on to wastewater, wastewater also has a fixed collection infrastructure as well as a fixed processing infrastructure. So, again, they have those two major investments that we have to not only collect the wastewater, but also process it in the way that we need to do. Their variable costs would be the chemicals and electricity, again, associated with the processing portion. Those would be their major variables. Their rates are structured a little bit different in the fact that we don't meter wastewater. We only meter water. So, we meter it when it goes in and we don't meter it when it comes back out. So, the way that's worked is worked on what we call a winter water average. It's based on each individual customer or account. It takes the four months during the winter, which is December, January, February, and March. The highest usage month is excluded from the calculation. And then 90% of that becomes then the water average that we use. That's their winter water average. So, when we're talking about that, that's the calculation we're using. And then the rate is set for the whole year. So, that's a known rate for the customer for the entire year until the next winter cycle, when it will be recalculated and reset again. So, there's no seasonality when it comes to our revenues on the wastewater side. However, if we do have really rainy winters, like this winter, that can change and that would change the winter water average again for an entire year until we are able to reset it again next year. So, dry winters and wet winters do make a difference in our wastewater revenues that come in during the year. Here's some of our major wastewater customer classes. Again, just to give you an idea of the different types of classes and the consumption and the rates associated with those particular customers. As we take a look at the five utility areas and then our nonutility area, we kind of input it in here to get our total revenues by enterprise. These are the gross revenues, so not the net revenues. So, we haven't put expenses into this side of it. And it also includes, on the electric and natural gas, it includes that pass-through revenue. So, we don't make any, there's no profit or anything on that. It's merely a pass-through of that particular commodity cost. But this just gives you an example of the various utilities within the city and where the revenues are coming from. And this kind of just shows you, as we're going through year by year, this kind of breaks it down to the numbers as we look over time. Now, this again does include the pass-throughs, which does kind of skew this a little bit. So, I would like to give you just a couple alternate numbers here. When we look at the total at the bottom, the change from 1415, that's 3.1 and the change to, from 1516 to 5%. If you were to take those pass-throughs out, because the cost of the commodity does fluctuate and can fluctuate considerably from year to year, it does tend to skew when we're looking at rate or revenue increases. So, if we were to pull those pass-throughs out, those bottom line figures, the first one instead of being 3.1 would be 5.1% increase. And the other one instead of being 5 would be 4.6. So, I can show you a little bit more even to be a 5.1% increase and then a 4.6% increase in revenues if we were to exclude those pass-through revenues. This is just kind of a historical view. Like I said, we did the general fund. We like to take a look back at pre-recession versus post-recession just to see what the comparisons are going through that. So, this just gives you kind of a historical view of those five different utilities. One of the things we do is when we talk about this and why we talk about the enterprise fund a lot, rather than talking about necessarily the individual pieces within that fund, is that the enterprise fund is managed as a whole. So, it's managed as one fund, utility, nonutility, all the pieces, the revenues, the expenses, the debt service, everything is managed together. When we sell our bonds, when we had the presentation from last week, we talked about utility revenue bonds. We sell utility revenue bonds, so we don't sell water, gas, natural gas, electric and so forth, individual bonds themselves when we go to the rating agencies. And so, all of the revenues are really tied to all of those bond repayments. And so, we manage it all as a whole. We have the same fund balance targets that we have when our general fund, which is an 8% to 10% fund balance based on the following year's anticipated operating expenses. And then we look at those, that reserve balance that we have here in the enterprise fund. One of the things in the enterprise fund that we want to be sure that we're aware of is that we have a tendency to hold a little bit more than the 8% to 10% minimum target that we have because it allows us to smooth our rates to our customers over time. So, we don't look at just one year or two years. We're always looking at that five-year horizon because our debt service may move around. Our capital infrastructure that we need to invest in may move around from year to year. And we want to make sure that we will have smooth rates to our customers and not on any particular year that might spike a need for a rate in there. And we show on the next slide is last year's. This is an example of an enterprise forecast. So, this is not the current enterprise forecast because we're working on that right now. And we'll be bringing that back to our Audit Finance and Enterprise Committee within the next month or so. But this is an example from last year of what our enterprise forecast was. And you can see if you look at the bottom line, when it looks at the reserve balances, and you can see why we are higher than the 8% to 10%. You know, for budgeting purposes, we really don't want to be below the 10% so that we have a cushion if something were to happen during the year. But you can see we're above the 10% because we do have an increase coming, anticipated and scheduled, we've known about it, for 1718 and 1819 where our debt service levels will rise back up to normal. And we kind of had a little brief from some debt service. And so, that's where we're scheduling is to get that through. You see, we kind of went down to the 9.5 and 9.8. That's what we're talking about when we're talking about that five-year view of making sure that we have sustainable revenues for the demand on our services. As we go forward, and we'll be coming back again with actual rate recommendations a little bit later in the budget cycle. And when we look at those rate recommendations, we'd look at a lot of different things. What we're looking at overall in the forecast are the revenues needed in order to sustain that reserve balance. But how we implement them can change from each one of those different programs we talked about. Because as you saw, there's different ways. There's a fixed charge and there's a consumer charge as well. And how you apply those affects our residents and our businesses a little bit different, depending on how you do that. So, we always look at that to see how we're actually impacting them. The other thing we do is we look at the rates overall and see what the needs of the particular program are and what the needs are of the entire enterprise fund as a whole. And then the last thing we do is we all want to make sure how we're affecting our residents. And so, we look at our homeowners comparison. The homeowners comparison takes all of our utilities. We exclude electric and natural gas because other municipalities do not own those. Those are owned by, those are serviced by Southwest Gas or SRP or APS. And so, we exclude those two, but we do take water, wastewater, solid waste. And then we also add other things like sales tax, secondary property tax, and primary property tax. And put those all together to what would be the cost to the average household within the city of Mesa to make sure that we're comparable with our surrounding communities when we put everything together. And so, this is our one, our most recent one from last year. And you can see we're really right in the middle of the pack when it comes to affordability within the city of Mesa. That's what I have for you on enterprise fund. Are there any questions that I can answer?
Thank you, Candace. Great presentation. I'm sure there are some questions here. Council, while you chew on it, a couple of quick questions. I have heard other communities talk about the homeowners comparison. I think this is a great tool for us to use and I appreciate the fact that we are where we are. But I wonder about the fairness of excluding electric and gas from the calculation. Because frankly, as you noted earlier, we're below market in electric and gas. We compare very favorably with the for-profit utilities that we compete against in that market. And I think that might paint a more accurate picture if we're comparing communities one to another. For example, our water and wastewater, our rates are higher than other communities. And I'm not, I'm interested in knowing why that is. But it's also probably out of fairness, we ought to know that our electric and gas are less than other communities. So, if we're trying to paint that picture of where we are comparing apples to apples, I would think that we might want to include, have it, even figure it a little bit differently.
Mayor, I'll take a shot of this. I think what we're trying to show is costs that we control, charges that we can control. And those cities don't get to control their SRP rates or their Southwest Gas. So, I mean, we could put in here, I think we're trying to show things that are decisions that are being made by each city versus being subject to the rates that are being charged. Because we obviously have, we have, sorry, we have homeowners who are Southwest Gas customers. But we're only showing those that are Mesa resident, Mesa customer, sorry. Mesa customer. So, it's kind of, it's trying to figure out where, we can do it either way, but you see the difference is that they don't control the rates from Southwest Gas. Now, unless you live in the downtown, you're an SRP customer. So, it doesn't necessarily reflect the cost. It would look, I guess it could look better, but it's really comparing at that point, if we included electric and gas, it's not everybody in the city. Does that make sense?
Yes, absolutely. You can't say this is, all Mesa residents are exactly the same when it comes to utility.
We could have a separate one that just showed.
Rick, your electric area is a very small area. So, it'd be a very small area compared to the whole city.
Yeah, five square miles.
Five and a half square miles, so yes.
Yeah, that's a good point.
And I think one of the things to remember too is you also look at primary property taxes that other communities have that we don't have. And you're adding that in there for that adjustment as well, correct?
Correct. So, if you look on that one graph, you can see those are the colors. So, if you look at the colors, the primary property tax is blue. And so, for the city of Mesa, you're not going to see any blue in that, on the left-hand side for that one because we don't have a primary property tax. The red one is the secondary property tax. As you can see how we compare two other cities when they have for their secondary property tax. And then you put that together with the sales tax too. So, again, we include the sales tax in there as well, looking at everybody else's rates. And then we also adjust for the tax on, no, we don't have a sales tax on food here in the city of Mesa. And so, some of the other municipalities do have a tax on food. And so, that makes their sales tax impact a little bit higher than we have here in the city of Mesa. So, we take all of those into account and try to get it as close to apples to apples as we can. We use city of Mesa consumption. So, it would be our consumption of water, you know, our average consumption of water that we would use and apply somebody else's rates to those.
So, the lack of a city's tax on food is taken into account in this graph?
That's correct.
The average homeowner spends X number of dollars on all of these things, including food, and that's calculated in here?
Correct. So, the ones, because we do not have a tax on food, then that's a little bit lower impact. So, if you have two cities that have the same sales tax, even if the city's same sales tax as us, but they have a tax on food, their impact to the average household is actually a little bit greater than ours. And so, when we have the data that's actually behind this, which is actually out on our website, so all this information's on our website, we have the data behind it and you can actually see another municipality that has the same tax as us, but a different impact. And that's why, because one has a food tax and one does not.
Thank you. Mr. Luna?
Just real quick, Candace, are you anticipating any increases on some of our commodities? Where, you know, where we purchase gas and where we purchase electricity and water?
I would have to move to the other department heads to look at that. But remember that the natural gas and the electric, remember, are a pass-through to the customer. So, it is the impact to the residents, but it would not impact our.
But water, we are, water we are expecting, yeah.
You would say into the commodity though. Yeah, but to the commodity, yeah, to the water commodity, we do, yes. There's, we do expect an increase to the water commodity, which is a cost to us as part of the processing of that water.
Carrie, you might be able to answer this. We have the long-term contracts in place on the gas side as well. And those are negotiated contracts that Frank and his group go out and negotiate annually and on the market and try to find something better if we can.
Annually, a couple of year.
Right.
Ms. Frank is how long?
Three to five years.
Yeah, three to five years, yeah. But we review those and making sure we're always getting the best rate that we can.
I'm going to kind of stick to this idea of maybe including the other utilities. I'd be curious to see, I mean, out of fairness. The question you're trying to answer is where do we rank in terms of affordability with our peers? And I don't think you can exclude electricity and gas from that calculation because those are actual bills that people pay regardless of where they live.
And Mayor, we can do that. Just remembering you're only comparing about 15,000 people out of the whole city. But we could do that.
Well, yeah, it would be, the electricity would be tricky. You might have to say, okay, well, for example, if you live in an APS neighborhood like Phoenix, the rates are maybe a little bit higher than they are in a Salt River Project neighborhood. And so, just if you're trying to figure out where do I want to live? If I'm very concerned about cost of living, well, I'm going to want to live in an SRP neighborhood instead of an APS neighborhood. And I'm going to want to live in a Mesa natural gas neighborhood instead of a Southwest Gas neighborhood. And I'm going to want to live, I mean.
Do you want us to include our electric or not?
Well, I don't know how to, I defer to people, maybe 15, you calculate in, you know, 15% is Mesa and 85% is SRP.
Oh, you want us to weight it? Okay.
Well, that would be one way to do it. I think that would give us a better picture as to is Mesa in fact in the middle of the scale or are we slightly below the middle of the scale? To me, it just doesn't make sense to ignore actual costs like gas and electricity when you're calculating, when you're trying to arrive at how much it costs to live in a particular city.
Right. And I think, Mayor, if we go back to the earlier charts, we showed for the average resident, the difference on the electric side was eight bucks. Am I off? And for gas, what was it? I don't remember what gas was. So, those would be the differences? That were going to be about $8, maybe, and what's gas?
$8.
We could put a second chart in there?
So, Mayor, what we. So what we, and Mayor, what we could do is do really like a one-off chart. So we have, here's what the average that we're used to comparing. And then do, if you're in the electric area, this would also result, you know, affect you. And if you're in our gas area, then this would also be for it too as well. So we could do something like that.
Yeah, so Mayor, it's $8.64 cheaper than Southwest Gas. That's what it comes down to.
So to me, one reason to do this is just to see who has bragging rights for being more or less expensive than another community. But maybe the more compelling reason to do it is that we set rates. And if we, as we're setting rates, it's probably useful for us to know where we are in terms of our neighbors.
Right. And that's why we run the Southwest Gas number and the SRP number.
And if we are lagging behind, I mean, it seems, if we're more affordable in one area and less affordable in another area, but it's all averaging out, that's still good for me to know, as I'm saying, should I raise water rates or not? I don't know if anybody else feels that way or not.
Well, I can tell you from my experience with, when I worked with a gas company, I'll tell you that there's a big part of Glendale, there's also a large part of Tempe and a major part of Phoenix that don't have natural gas at all. So it would be on comparison of those 15,000 customers, you know, back when APS owned the gas system and they sold it to Southwest Gas, they intentionally built it so there was a ring basically around the Phoenix metro area where there was gas in the middle and there was this dead zone where there was no gas, and then it picked up again years later outside of that. So that dead zone is Glendale, Tempe, parts of North Phoenix, Phoenix, there's a little bit in Chandler and Scottsdale as well. So each of the communities that you're talking about or that are on here are communities that won't even have natural gas, that won't even, that don't have, they would be, they would be about the same as us, I guess, in comparison on the gas side. So I don't, I guess I'm not, I'm not understanding where figuring the gas and the electric into this. Because whether you have Southwest Gas or Mesa gas, you're still paying a meter charge and you're still paying a pass, well, it's a pass-through commodity, but you still have a meter, your meter charge is predominantly the same. So I think you could have the bragging rights and say by living in Mesa, it's a heck of a lot cheaper than living in Glendale and a heck of a lot cheaper than living in Phoenix, just because, you know, our, if you're in our territory, it's cheaper for you to live here anyway. Now, if you want to adjust those upwards so that we're competing on a per-meter basis with our private counterparts, then we can, I think that's something to certainly look at, but...
Yeah, and Mayor, council members, and probably the largest factor of cost will come in the average value of your home, what's being assessed. And that's where you'll see a big differential. I mean, because we've averaged this down to, you know, their averages and our, been taking our averages.
Correct. When we look at the property tax, it's the average house in Mesa compared to our property tax. But if we look at Scottsdale, it's the average property in Scottsdale compared to their property tax. And Tempe, average house in their, in Tempe compared to their property tax. Because obviously, your property tax rate is influenced by the value or the average value of your, of your housing stock. And so when you look at that, they're able to do lower rates if they have a higher value to their housing stock. And so we don't want to take our average Mesa house and compare it to all those different rates, because that's not necessarily a true comparison. Because if we had a higher value, we'd have a lower rate. That's kind of the way it works.
But Mayor, if it would help that on this chart, we had some kind of reference to where we stand on our electric with SRP and our gas charge with Southwest Gas, we could include that.
Sure, we could include that as a footnote and on here as well.
Yeah, I'd encourage you just to look at it a little bit. That might be helpful for us to know where we, does it change where we are relative to other communities if we factor, figure out a way to factor gas and electricity into it?
Okay.
If I live in a neighborhood that I don't have the opportunity to have gas, then presumably that means my electric bill is going to be higher. So it would seem like it kind of averages itself out. But I'd just be curious to see if that's, that changes our look a little bit.
Okay.
Okay. Yes, I'm sorry, Mr. Freeman.
I'd like to talk about a controversial subject, garbage, solid waste. Cost recovery on our recyclable material? How much do we earn per year on the recyclable material? And then what do we do with that? Do we spend it on garbage trucks or? So I know that recyclable material is kind of a commodity that's, say, right?
Yeah, so all, and I'll let someone answer the percentage, but this stands alone as its own cost center. So all the fees that are collected or recovery or commodity cost related recycling goes back into the solid waste fund to help offset tipping fees or cost, whatever costs are maybe within the solid waste department. Scott, what's the, what are we recovering right now?
I don't have, and I apologize, I don't have the exact numbers with me on the recycling today. But I can, I can definitely get those to you very, very easily. What I will say is when, because when we list it out on your bill though, we'll list that the black barrel, there's a cost associated with the black barrel, and then the blue barrel that it's, it's free, there's no charge associated with the blue barrel. Well, we still have all of those, a lot of those same costs as far as the truck, the fuel, and the operator, all of those costs are still incurred in order to pick up that blue barrel.
They're a fixed cost.
Right. They're fixed costs that we have. So what we do get is we get some revenue associated with the recycling, depending on the contracts that we have. So we're kind of in a, in a changing time with the recyclables. For example, we have, we have some contracts where we have a floor price that we will receive, a minimum floor price for every inbound tonnage of recycling that we get. Those types of contracts are going away now, and it's going more to of a shared market that we have. So depending on what the pricing is at the time and the makeup of the recycling that we have, so we'll do audits quarterly on our, on our recycling to look at, because not every commodity inside that blue barrel is worth the same too. So your cardboard is much more valuable than, say, glass. So they'll look at what the composite is of that, and then we'll get paid based off of what the market is putting out as far as what those commodities are worth. And we have a share associated with whoever we're bringing that to. In addition to that, they're starting to charge a processing fee to actually take our recyclable materials. So the cost that they incur to then separate out the cardboard, the glass, the aluminum, they're charging us a processing fee for doing that.
Scott, let me quickly jump in here, Mayor and Council, but we kind of get caught up in thinking, this is how much money we're making off recycling. The biggest benefit of recycling is called diversion. So we're not running it through the landfill and we're not paying the tipping fee. So that threshold, what the tipping fee is per ton versus diverting it and getting a penny back, even if we just broke, even if we just, if we had to pay someone a little bit to take our recycling, we're avoiding the tipping fee cost. And so that's one of the motivations for the recycling. So the more we can encourage that, it diverts it from the landfills. And the challenge we'll have with landfills down the road will be our, some of our landfills, the largest one we take it to, you know, is they have caps or limits on them. And so anything we can do to extend the life of those landfills certainly is a benefit to us.
Thank you, I'm good.
Thank you. Any other questions, Counsel? Yes, sir.
This, I don't see anywhere, and I think last week we discussed the general obligation bond debt. I don't see anywhere in the chart where it shows our enterprise bond debt. Can you comment on that or did I miss it?
Actually, if you go back to the example of the forecast.
It's that line that says, keep going, it's at the end.
We've got it on here, 32. So that's slide 32. So that's our example from last year. So that's our enterprise forecast from last year. And you'll see that there is a debt service transfer number. It is just about half, not quite halfway down.
Under uses of funds.
Under uses of funding, you'll have operational expenses, capital transfer, and then the debt service transfer. And so that is our debt service transfer out of the enterprise fund into our debt service fund, which would pay the principal and interest on those debts.
And that is probably the largest determinant of our rates and planning, it has the greatest effect on the budget. So we've tried very carefully to try to, as we move up, as debt service increases, to slide that up slowly over time. There's some big jumps, but that's what helps pays for the large plan. So that's what that is.
And then in addition to that, that's the transfer out of the enterprise fund. We also have impact fees that also go towards the debt service. So that is not necessarily total number, but that's the number coming out of the enterprise fund.
Well, they're developer-paid fees.
Yes. Impact fees are developer-paid fees that we collect still each year that go toward the debt that is already outstanding.
So where's the total debt amount? I see the service amount, but where's the else?
Yeah, that wouldn't be, that's about a billion dollars. The principal amount's about a billion dollars.
Well, I mean, that's relevant, right? Because when we're talking about cost of living, I mean, to use the analogy, if you're, if you're living off your credit card, you could accumulate a ton of credit card debt where it appears that your, I guess, operating expense for your household is low, but realistically, if you're carrying much of debt in the background, that's as relevant as the amount that you're putting out, right?
Mayor and Councilmember Whitaker, I believe, and I have to go back to look at the presentation, but I believe that was included in last week's presentation when we talked about issuing the new bonds. They looked at the current outstanding bonds that were out there. And then what this new issuance would do, because we're refinancing some of those. So I believe those numbers are in there.
Okay.
I did not include those in here, because we were really focused on the operating budget. If it's not in there, I won't get into those numbers.
Okay, great. Yeah, I just remember the general obligation bonds, I didn't remember.
Right, both sides, both of those.
There's a reference to it.
I have another question. I know that we service the Queen Creek area. Can we charge them more for their services so that?
We do.
Oh, that's awesome, okay. Cool.
Hopefully Channel 11 doesn't go all the way.
What are they going to do? They can't vote us out of office, I don't think.
I don't know. Thank you. Mr. Whitaker, any other questions?
Yeah, but I can't.
While you're thinking about it. Candace, you mentioned impact fees, and I know, I mean, there's been some changes in legislation over the last several years that impacted our ability to collect impact fees. Could either you or Mr. Smith maybe give us a short answer as to what impact fees, if any, we are still able to collect?
Yes, we are actually able to, because when the statute changed with the, with the law, with state law, we, if we were to adopt new impact fees, there's a new process that we would need to go to, to adopt new impact fees. However, we were able to, as the city of Mesa, because we had outstanding debt that was issued based on future collections of impact fees, we were in essence grandfathered and allowed the fact that we were allowed to continue our existing impact fees until we had received the amount sufficient to pay off that eligible debt. So we still have impact fees on water, wastewater, police, and fire are the four that we still have, because we have not collected the amount sufficient to pay off that pre-existing debt before the statute changed. And storm sewer, right? We have storm sewer as well.
Yeah, and Mayor and Council, and when one of those fees, the debt that's outstanding gets paid off, that fee actually is eliminated. For example, there used to be a library impact fee, and then about a year ago, that debt was paid off and so that fee went away. So it's, slowly these fees are actually reducing over time.
Yeah, parks impact fee was the last one that we discontinued. So again, we discontinued the fees. There's still a little bit of debt outstanding, but we have collected the money sufficient to pay that debt when it comes due.
So when those, those bonds are paid off that pre-existed the evolution or the abolishment of the impact fees, then from that point on, we won't collect any additional impact fees?
Well, Mayor and Council, then I think that Council can then could take up and look at the possibility of adopting impact fees going forward under the existing statute. We fell within, as Candace described, I think it's a fair description, is a grandfathering provision. So that was beneficial to the city. After those, those debts that are still outstanding are paid off, and at that point, the city then may look at adopting fees on a going-forward basis. And so that's more than a decade away, just so you know, to give you a concept of the debt that's outstanding on these remaining funds.
So the new legislation on impact fees doesn't prohibit them entirely, it just is more restrictive maybe than the prior legislation?
Very restrictive.
Yes, very restrictive and a lot of additional strings and record-keeping, if you will, going into the future. And so we did look at all those, we had, we had a team within the city of Mesa, cross-functional team, that looked at impact fees and going under the new statute and decided that that was not advantageous for the city of Mesa to try to adopt new ones when we had the ability to continue our fees as they were and to continue to pay off the debt, which is a substantial assistance on operating funds such as the enterprise operating fund.
Okay, thank you very much. Counsel, any, yes, Mr. Whitaker.
On your chart on page 28, it shows the revenues on the enterprise fund. Where is the profit per department?
The net revenues or the? We don't, I didn't include them on this one, but we can, I can give that information. It's also available in our, like, if you wanted to look at how we ended 15, 16, we have, our year-end report is out on our website, and it has both the enterprise fund and the general fund. If you look at the enterprise fund, that is net. So those are all the net, what we budgeted for, net revenues, or net uses and sources is what we call them. And then also how we came in for the year. And so I can send a link for you.
Perfect. And that breaks it down by individual category.
Breaks it down by each one of these areas. It shows the actual, the revenues that we budgeted and the revenues received, and the expenditures that we budgeted and the expenditures that we received, and then the net together.
Okay, and the last question I had, on the total enterprise revenues, you were showing the increases on the next slide of 3.1% and 5%. What, what's the rate goal that you guys set? Do you have one, or is it just depending on how, where the budget falls from?
The goal is based on the forecast. So if you, and go to that, we're always looking at that reserve balance to make sure that we have a reserve balance sufficient to allow us to do rate smoothing for our customers. And so the goal is that eight to 10, so for budgeting purposes, we want to make sure that over the forecast period, we don't fall before 10% in reserve balance. And so that's really, that's the overall goal. And then we look at individually within those different programs, what their needs are, if they have some additional capital needs coming in, or something like to that effect, we'll take a look individually. But we start at the fund as a whole and look at the reserve balance. So our goal is always reserve balance, because revenues come with, there's a lot of variable costs, right? So with increased revenues also come increased expenses. And so we're always looking at that net and what the impact is to the bottom-line reserve.
But, yeah, excuse me, just like, bottom line, that is a number, but ultimately, we have, we look at the system and say, how is it going to meet the needs of current and future customers of the city? So we have to look at the whole program, meaning from a utility perspective, our goal is to provide a customer service that they can rely upon the consistency of the delivery of whatever that enterprise is. So we have to look at the context of what's it going to take to keep maintaining and reinvesting in our current infrastructure as well as meeting the needs going out into the future. So that's where we start from. And from a financial standpoint, we always want to make sure we maintain reserves, as Candace said, throughout the forecast period of 10%. So we take, we first take, what is it going to take to deliver a sustainable enterprise for the existing and future residents? And we put all that into the forecast, and then we try to make sure the rates are manageable within the context of the reserves.
And also, Mayor, Councilmember Whitaker, one of the other things that we do that we may not have focused on too much is when we're forecasting consumption, that's also a number of accounts. So we're forecasting, what is that growth going to be? So when we're looking at the new water plant that we're putting in the southeast area of Mesa, we are anticipating those, that growth in accounts or growth in customers and factoring that into the forecast as well. So there's a kind of both factored in there, the growth of customers and then the resulting rates that we would need. Obviously, the more customers, then the less pressure on the existing customers for the rates.
Sure. So the reason I ask on slide 30, it appears that the water revenues just keep climbing and climbing while the other ones actually look like they're decreasing. So I guess my question is, why, are we increasing the water rates higher than we are increasing some of the other enterprise funds?
Yes, we are. And because the water has the largest base of residents, everyone that lives in Mesa, almost everyone, is a water customer of the city. So when we look at that rate, that's going to impact the most individuals. And so again, remember, gas and electric are kind of governed by the SRP and the Southwest Gas rate. So those are going to stay consistent with, right under those rates. And so that's, water becomes the, where they have the largest, and it says revenues, but it also has the largest capital investment as far as infrastructure that we have to invest in every year. So if you look at the majority of that enterprise fund, on not just the revenue side, but the expense side, it's going to look very similar, maybe, it's going to look very similar to that too, just because the debt service, the capital costs, the operating expenses are most tied to water than anything else in here. It's by far the largest portion of this. So it needs the revenues to cover the debt service and the operating costs. If we think about the plants, some of the biggest plants, the water plants, you know, we're building a new water treatment plant at Signal Butte, which is how much? Hundred-and-twenty-five million dollars. We're building a wastewater treatment plant that's eighty, two-hundred. So that's where the, that's where the expenses are versus buying a fleet of garbage trucks.
Councilmember Whitaker, I think what may help, too, is I can also send you a link to the, this is just one page from the forecast from last year, which kind of pulls it all together, and it doesn't break it out by program. But the full forecast actually breaks it out by all the individual utilities. And so I can send you a link to that, and you can actually look at that net sources and uses over time, and that way you'll be able to see how they compare with each other. I think that would be very helpful.
All right, thank you.
It's probably good to note, too, that there's a different philosophy that applies to the city of Mesa as opposed to other communities and the way we finance our city government. My understanding is nineteen-thirty or so, the Mesa City Council?
Forty-two.
Nineteen forty-two, city council held a meeting and abolished the city primary property tax, and at the same meeting, I think, purchased some of the utility companies.
Electric utility.
And they made the decision that going forward, we're going to finance our city through the sale of utilities as opposed to a primary property tax. So that's the formula that we've inherited. So that's why we raise utility rates rather than raise primary property tax rates, because we don't have primary property tax. Other questions? Thank you, Candace. Great presentation. The next item on our agenda, item two-B, hear a presentation and provide direction on the funding process and priorities for federal grants, CDBG, home investment, emergency solutions grants, and human services funds. Liz, welcome back.
Thank you. Good evening, mayor, council. I'm going to go through the federal grants funding process and the priorities that we have, that you, as council, make decisions. And so I would like just to start very high-level on the federal funding formula. We get annual block grants from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, as we know it's called HUD. It's formula-based, so it's non-competitive. It's based typically on population and funding available from the federal government. Each program is very unique. Each program has its own eligibility requirements, its own regulations, and the federal block grants I'll be talking about today is community development block grant, the home investment program, and emergency solutions grant. Just want to go through each one, just to give you very general information. So the CDBG, the community development block grant, is principally for low-to-moderate-income persons, and the variety of uses is broad. We could do it, we can use it for infrastructure, revitalizing neighborhoods, economic development. We also use it for nonprofits. There is a cap on how much we can do for nonprofits for what we call public services. The emergency solutions grant is targeted for homeless activities, so engaging homeless individuals on the streets, like our navigators, operating shelters, providing rental assistance to rapidly rehouse families, and also for prevention, to keep people out of homelessness. The home investment program, as we discussed in the last meeting that I spoke to you, is really about building and buying and rehabilitating affordable housing, encouraging homeownership, and providing some rental assistance, direct rental assistance for low-income people. The human services program is our one non-federal program, but it is important to talk about it when we're talking about funding, our funding process, and what priorities we want. Our human services program incorporates both our general funds, ABC funds, and the ABC funds of the eight hundred, and here it shows eight-hundred-and-twenty-six, it's actually eight-hundred-and-sixteen thousand, a hundred-and-eight thousand of that is ABC funds. Those are some of the activities there that we fund, such as crisis, prevention, early intervention, transitional, long-term, long-term being like Oakwood. I know we've talked about Oakwood for individuals with Alzheimer's and dementia. System support, like community information referral, uh, community, I'm sorry, the legal assistance is what, I'm blanked on their name. But those are some of the things that we fund with the human services program. I would like to talk about our consolidated plan that often is not well-known by most residents. I just want to show you what our consolidated plan looks like. It's a pretty large document. It's required by HUD, it's mandated by HUD. It's required that every community does a community development planning process. It was adopted in 2015 by city council. It's a five-year planning document. It provides us direct guidance on how to use our federal dollars. It also, the planning process was very intense, in which we brought in a consultant, and we talked, the consultant gathered data from census data, interviewed various organizations like the United Way, the Rail Group, and our major nonprofits. So the consultant pulled together our consolidated plan recommendations, in which we brought to council. Part of the consolidated plan also talks about areas in which we can spend our federal dollars, and that is primarily fifty-one percent or greater of the AMI, and primarily residential. So I did provide to you a map that demonstrates where those areas are. The areas covered in red is where we identified as our CDBG priority areas. This was determined by council, but as you can see, there's many other areas outside of the CDBG priority areas that has areas that are fifty-one percent or greater. So I just want to make sure, to share that with you as part of our planning document. I also wanted to talk about the difference between the consolidated plan and the housing master plan that I spoke about last week. The master plan, I described as a planning document to help us decide what our housing inventory is and where gaps exist. The consolidated plan is different in that it only looks at how we invest our federal dollars in the next five years, and it looks at those areas that have that fifty-one percent or greater of AMI, low-to-moderate-income households. So I wanted to make sure you understood the difference between the two documents. I also want to state that the consolidated plan is a living document. Every year, we do an annual action plan, in which we outline what activities, which projects we're funding. So when you make funding decisions, that is, becomes part of our consolidated plan on an annual basis. So the most important part, I think, for today's discussion is, what are those priorities that were identified when adopted in April 2015? And we continue to look at that as you make funding decisions. What are those priorities you want to continue to support? They are all important, but sometimes certain things come up in which we want to really focus on certain parts of our priorities. So there's several priorities that go over two slides, and I just want to make sure you're all aware of what those are. First is investing in economic growth and workforce development, increasing and maintaining affordable housing stock, decreasing homelessness, providing other non-homeless public services, implementing a trans-oriented strategy for community development, and increase collaboration between service providers, and affirmatively furthering fair housing. So those are the priorities that have been identified in the consolidated plan and are used for our, how we identify which programs we want to fund. Our process timeline, we just closed our funding applications for those federal block grants. We are in the process of evaluating them. We will be going to our housing community advisory board on March 2nd. We will be coming at the end of March, early April, to the community and cultural development committee with recommendations. And then we will also come back to study session, to counsel, full counsel, to look at all the recommendations. At the final action will be the full council action on the annual action plan, which goes to HUD and has to be approved by HUD. And that's the timeline. I want, encourage any questions, any direction related to those priorities.
Thank you, Liz. So if this council, we've talked about a strategic plan for homelessness, to maybe identify some of the services that we want to encourage in our community aimed at accomplishing the task of making progress on homelessness issue. If we identify what some of those are, but they're maybe not services that we have pending applications for, is there a way for us, in spite of the January 2nd and the February 2nd deadlines that have already come and gone, is there a way for us to still put a request out on the street for some of those services?
Right. So what happens if we come with applications and there's not applications that are really meeting what the priorities that you're looking for? We could definitely reopen that competition. We do have a deadline to HUD to try to get our annual action plan in by June 30th, but that is not a hard-set date. It just pushes our ability to get that funding approval for the new fiscal year. So we're very sensitive to those dates, but they by no means keep us restricted to having things done by, you know, hard deadlines.
Yes, Mr. Luna?
Thank you, Liz, for that great presentation. I was noticing on the map that this is a defined CDBG area. With the consolidated plan, is it possible that we might extend it to the east? Because we have a lot of pockets within our community that have high levels of poverty. And I'm referencing to many of our schools, that are Title I schools that receive federal funding because, for free and reduced lunches. So we know that we have them throughout the community. Is that something we might want to address when we look at developing the new consolidated plan?
I will say, mayor, vice mayor, Luna, thank you for your question. I will say that whether, re-identifying the priorities, I'm not sure if we can re-identify them based on the consolidated plan. We can do a substantial amendment. So should we redefine those areas? That is something that we would go through a public comment process. However, that, just because we have set priority areas, does not mean we can't serve those areas with CDBG funds, as long as we can show that that activity benefits the low-to-moderate-income households.
I had another question relative to the ABC funds.
Yes.
A better community. Have we seen a decrease in donations? Because I pay my bill online now. I mean, it automatically is pulled from the checking account. So are we seeing a decrease in that, or what's happening with that?
Good afternoon. My name is Neil Curley, the special projects manager in the city manager's office. And mayor, vice mayor, Luna, to answer your question, so we've been tracking ABC donations every month. Again, those are the donations that our utility customers can elect to donate to this fund. And year-to-date, actually, we're up in donations about four percent. However, when we look at the dollar value of those donations, they're down about one-point-four percent. And we've been really pushing, a lot of our communication lately with utility customers is that they have more options. Before, it was presented to them as either a five-dollar donation is nothing or nothing. And lately, we've been trying to let customers know they do have the option to donate either a roundup, where it rounds up your utility bill to the nearest dollar, one, two, or five. So we're seeing more people donate, however, they're opting to choose those lower donation amounts.
Thank you.
Yes. If I could just comment on the ABC donation thing, from the outside looking in, when you pay that on your bill and you just see the ABC donation, it's not very descriptive in the sense of like, okay, I'm going to give my money, we have no idea where it's going. So just as a comment, if there's anything you guys can do to, from a marketing perspective, to try to get people, I think that could be very effective.
Yes, thank you, mayor, councilmember Whitaker. Yes, that's one of the issues we've identified that we have to work on telling our story. So we're working on doing that through multiple avenues. One of the things that we're noticing, a lot of people are paying their bill via online or SurePay, so that really reduces the amount of contact points, I guess you could say, that we have with them. So we're working on ways to reach out to them and tell those stories, to the effect that their donations are making in the community. But thank you for the suggestion. We'll continue to do that.
I just want to comment on that. That's a good point that you bring up, councilmember Whitaker. We had talked about, several years ago, about rebranding ABC, because it causes a lot of confusion. Maybe that's something that we can talk about in the future, about rebranding ABC, what it really means, and then really describe what it actually does to our community members and the wonderful service that they do provide.
Sorry, if I could just add on to that. I think when I donate money to causes, what I always look for is, am I truly having an impact on what it is that I'm donating to? You know, if I go to donate, I think, what's the donation program from Africa? Sponsor a Child One, where they actually have the child write you letters every month so that you can actually see the feedback. And I just think that that personal touch is, would help drastically, so.
Good suggestion. This agenda item talks about us setting priorities for federal grants, and so I think you need some direction from council as to, I noticed in the timeline, we have, for example, March, April, cultural development committee is going to be meeting, council's going to be committing, housing and community development advisory board is going to be meeting, making decisions on what proposals to fund. And so we need to have, you need to know what our priorities are and what our strategies are. So I know, council, just another reminder, we have a strategic planning meeting for this council on the 23rd of this month. I would guess that's probably the next best opportunity for us to talk about what our priorities are. Do we want, for example, a homeless strategic plan and to identify specific services that we are hoping to fund in our community? Or, that's one example, but, so Liz, could we work that into your timeline? If there's priorities that are set in that strategic planning meeting on the 23rd, will that give these council committees, but also citizen committees, a sufficient time to incorporate those priorities?
It would, mayor. We're meeting with our advisory board on the 2nd, so after the 23rd, we can bring that to them.
Okay. Thank you. Yes, Mr. Whitaker?
One other question, how has the light rail affected the LMI numbers?
Mayor, councilmember Whitaker, I would not be able to answer that question directly. So the question, the answer is, I don't know.
The point-in-time survey, when are those numbers going to be released?
Mayor, the numbers for the point-in-time count right now are unofficial. We give those to American Association of Government. They typically come out in June, July with their final numbers, and they do it by jurisdiction and then total number for the county.
Okay. Thank you. Council, any other questions for Liz? Thank you very much, Liz. That was very helpful. Okay, next item on our agenda for this meeting, item three, hear reports on meetings and conferences attended. Council, any reports? Hearing none. Item four is, I'm sorry, Mr. Luna?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was just going to do announcement for Saturday. Is it too soon?
No, perfect time.
So it's my exercise event. I encourage you all to attend. That's at the Multi Generation Center. Free classes for anyone that would like to take a spinning class, a Zumba class, or any fun classes.
How about yoga? We got yoga.
Yoga classes, and they're all free, and so I welcome the training and a free breakfast. And I expect all city staff to be there, right? So it's this Saturday, it's Heart Your Health event at the Multi Generation, and it starts at eight o'clock, eight o'clock to noon.
Eight AM, great.
Can you do the breakfast only, or do you have to?
As long as you go, I'm happy. You can go upstairs, there's a lot of equipment upstairs for you to work on.
Great idea. Okay, Mr. Brady, other scheduling items?
That was the first one I had, and so the next one would be, is we'll see you for a study session on Thursday at 7:30. Thank you.
Council, any other announcements or comments? If not, entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting. Thank you very much. Second, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, and here we are adjourned.